Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the January 3rd, December, I mean, January, Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask the Reverend Cherry Wheeler to come forward with an invocation for us, please. Good morning, Reverend Cherry.
Good morning, sir, commissioners. Let us pray together. Gracious God of the universe, thank you for bringing us through another year. Many are glad it's over and look to this new year with hope and anticipation of better days ahead. As we look forward, may we endeavor to live by the sacred texts you have provided us, remembering we are not in the ultimate control, though we are responsible to act with compassion and wisdom, that we would guard our hearts and minds from evil thoughts, hateful speech, and unrighteous acts, that we would be slow to anger and quick to forgive. May we resolve to pray for those around us, whether we agree with them or not. May we display a grateful heart in all things. May we take more time developing and renewing our relationships with friends and family. May we be the first to find humor and joy in the circumstances we find ourselves. May we practice patience and hospitality with all we encounter. Please help us to be instruments of your perfect peace this day and throughout the year. Now bless the commissioners as they move our county forward in 2022. Anoint them with wisdom, strength, and vision. Help them to seek to understand others and give them clarity of purpose. Finally, put your guiding hand on them and lead them as they conduct the county's business. We thank you for the hope and promise of another year, and we pray we will conduct ourselves in ways that bring honor and glory to you. Amen.
Amen. May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
County manager.
Good morning, Happy New Year. Number one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, county manager. I just have a couple of things this morning. Number one, National Weather Service has issued a high wind warning for the northern Outer Banks and Hatteras from 7:00 this morning until 10:00 p.m. this evening. There'll be winds in the range of 35 to 45 miles per hour with some gust up to 60 miles per hour. Also, there's coastal flood advisory in place for, once again, the same areas, Northern Outer Banks and to Hatteras Island, and that advisory's been issued from 6:00 a.m. to 10: p.m. Tuesday morning. Should expect 1 to 2 feet above ground level in low-lying areas. Also, a high surf advisory from 9:00 a.m. today until 4:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. Commissioner Couch has said that there's already overwash in Buxton when he was headed to our meeting this morning, so keep that in mind. We may certainly have possibility of some additional breaches on 12 between now and tomorrow morning. Rainfall should be about 1 and 1/2 to 2 inches is expected. So just for our citizens, I advise you to be very, very cautious out there and be prepared for some potential heavy winds. Man, I talk about this all the time, and I know the public and everyone is sick and tired of talking about COVID, but it's with us and it's hanging in there. And just from December the 20th through the 26th, Dare County had record cases of positive tests, some 228 cases in that very, very short period of time. The state of North Carolina reported over 18,000 cases just in the month of December, and about 2,200-plus people are hospitalized right now in North Carolina with complications. So I encourage you to be very, very cautious, continue to practice the three Ws. Unfortunately, my wife and I got this over the Thanksgiving holiday, and I can tell you, I'm fortunate that I had been vaccinated. Had I not, I'm afraid my complications could have been a lot worse, but thank the Lord up above. We had about four pretty tough days of COVID, and I definitely don't want to get this variance that's out there. So when you saw the beginning of the meeting, I'm double masking even the M95. So I've also instructed the county manager that with all these additional meetings that we try to have, we go virtual with the exception of our two board meetings each month because it's just, we need to be on the safe side and practice good principles and try to avoid getting COVID. Those, once again, if you haven't been vaccinated, I certainly encourage you to do so. It's very, very helpful for you and certainly, hopefully, would keep you out of the hospital if you contracted the COVID variance. And then finally, last but not least, I want to say Happy New Year to everyone. We've got a lot going on in the county that we're going to be celebrating in 2022. I'll remind you that January 16th, right, Dorothy? Public Information Officer is the date?
The 19th.
19th.
19th at 2:00.
Yeah, 19th at 2:00. I'll be doing a virtual State of the County here in this room, and so I wish we were able to do it personally at one of our locations off-site because we always have very good attendance, but to be on the safe side, we're going to do this again virtually on January the 19th at 2:00 here in this room. So stay tuned, and hopefully you'll tune in because we, the board has a lot to be very, very proud of and share with the public on the 19th. So with that said, county manager, that completes my chairman's comment.
Chairman, that brings us to item two on the agenda, the presentation of the service pins today. First this morning, we have David White. He's our chief real property appraiser. He's here to get his 15-year pin from Jose Wilson.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, commissioners. Happy New Year. I'm going to take this off for this. Well, it's my honor today to present David with his 15-year pin for service to Dare County. I asked him on the way over here, I said, "So it feels like just yesterday, doesn't it?" He said, "Yeah." I said, "That's good, because you're going to have to give me 15 more." David started his career with Dare County in June of, or actually, January of '07 as a real property appraiser. He was promoted to his current position eight years later in 2015. I came in later that year, so it's been my pleasure to work with David in his current position since the time I was here. He holds up, he's responsible for the appraisal of all residential real property in the county. That's 85% of our real property tax base. Just for perspective, it's approximately 36,000 parcels, and the assessed value is somewhere around 13 and 1/2 billion. So he does that with a staff of two real property appraisers and one real property appraisal technician. So as you can imagine, that's quite a daunting task. It's really a daunting task during a reappraisal. So David's been through two reappraisals in his tenure, the last being the 2020 reappraisal. In a reappraisal, we review every parcel. So if you can think about it, it's constant days of in front of a computer screen looking at every parcel in the county. He's, the 2020 reappraisal was a little bit different for us. We took a different approach. We used a lot of different processes, and David, he embraced those processes, and he really contributed to the success of that project. Yeah, I can't say enough about his production levels, his constant dedication to his position, and that of his staff. His direction of his staff is impeccable. He's a leader, a natural leader. He's just a true asset to our department. He's a Level 2 certified appraiser by the North Carolina Department of Revenue, soon to be Level 3, and he's also pursuing a designation through IAAO, which is our International Association of Assessing Officers. I have no doubt David will be successful in those ventures as well. Weather today brings up something that we don't really like to talk about in my office, but I'm going to mention it today because of David's dedication to that part of his position, and that is damage assessment. A lot of people don't realize that the Tax Appraisal Office is responsible for the damage assessment with storms. And as you can imagine, and as you well know, that they are all different. All these events are different. They have different levels of magnitude. They have different areas that are affected, and David is basically my field operations manager in that process. And that is controlled chaos, but he does a very good job of that. He manages our teams well, and it really shows when we are able to produce reports to you in a timely manner. So I thank him for that. It's not, it's not well-known that we do that, but it is a very important part of our job. So outside of work, David contributes his time and talents to volunteering for the Parks and Recreation Department. As you are probably aware, his father is the director, Tim. I don't think that, I think it is out of pure love of helping the children and mentoring them along their way in a team environment, which is very important to our mission and our environment. So, and last but not least, of course, David is dedicated to his family. He's dedicated to his daughter Hadley and their son, and his son Hudson. He coaches their softball teams, and he really enjoys that. Something you may not know about David is that David is quite an athlete, and he was a member of the 1996 Manio High School State Championship baseball team. And he left Manio High, and he went on to play four years of baseball at High Point University. I've been rummaging through David's office to find some statistics. So he played all four years. He was a pitcher. He's a southpaw, a left-handed pitcher, and he was the number-one pitcher his senior year, leading the team in strikeouts with a 3.79 ERA. So that's pretty strong if you know anything about baseball. So David, he embraces that team spirit, and he brings it to the office, and he helps us achieve our goals and our mission. So David, thank you very much for your service. Congratulations.
Thank you, David. Next, we have Richie Burkey. He's a distribution system specialist, and he will receive his 20-year pin.
He couldn't be here today. Richie began his work with Dare County Water Department in January of 2002. He's very thorough about the quality and detail of his work and conscientious in his job and his task performance. He has become very knowledgeable with the distribution system and his daily work in locating water lines for underground utility construction work. Richie is never hesitant to assist coworkers during work hours or after-hours on emergency water line repairs. He provides professional service and presents a positive disposition when interacting with customers. Richie holds a C distribution certification. Thank you, Richie, for your 20 years of service with Dare County, and we hope to get many more.
That, Mr. Chairman, we would move over to item four on, or item three on the agenda.
We have one more, David Bryan. I wasn't sure it was coming.
Okay, we have one, we have David Bryan with the Sheriff's Department received his pin this morning, and Sheriff Dowd is here to make that presentation.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Thought we weren't going to quite make it. I said, "Matt, they might have missed us," but I didn't have a pin, so I said, "We'll see what happens." Matt's been with us, like the pin says, for 15 years, and he started in the patrol division. I think he worked over here in Manio, may have spent a little time over in Collington, too, but didn't take long for us to notice that Matt is very, very smart, and anything you give Matt to do, he does it, but he not only just does it, he does it very, very well. Matt has, Matt writes grants for us. We actually had problems with the state lab trying to get latent fingerprints done, and that was one of the things we did when we came into office. We wanted to make sure that we could do the best we could do because back then, most of the things that were happening were break-ins. If you couldn't get a fingerprint off something in a house and get it back rapidly, they would break in for six more months before we could figure out what was going on. So Matt went to school, learned how to do that, made really good use of the AFIS system. He can build a print. It's amazing what he and Troy can do in that little office in the back. But they've been, they've done things for everybody. They've worked for different counties. He's solved murder cases off a prints that he's made, and we're one of the very few places east of Greenville that can do anything like that, almost east of Raleigh, to tell you the truth. So Matt's done very, very well. He's reorganized our evidence system, put in controls in that where in a room, it's amazing, it looks like a doctor's office when you go back there, the filing system that's in it. I don't know how he keeps up with any, but he does a very, very good job. We don't have problems finding anything, which is good because that's what the court looks at most often, is where the evidence went. And if we have a problem with that, the case is gone, and we've had no problems with that at all. Matt knows what he's doing. Matt can do, like I said, Matt can do just about anything. Matt is a gunsmith. He does that at home. He can do anything with our guns. We're looking at probably certifying him to be a firearms instructor. He loves guns, and when you love what you mess with, it makes it a whole lot easier to do. And Matt raises food, raises, what is it, goats? I think he shows goats, but like I say, Matt's involved in the community of Dare, getting ready to get into a little bit of politics over in Turrell County, and we're just glad he's over here with us and working, and hope that he'll give us 15 more years, and we thank you for everything you do, buddy.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, that leads us to item three on the agenda, and that's our Employee of the Month, and Jenny Collins is here to make that presentation.
Happy New Year, chairman, commissioners. I want to introduce Captain Jeff Mitchell here. Jeff's been with the county for 21 years. He's one of those folks that never does anything at the minimum. He's always got to go above and beyond, and he's never satisfied with how something turns out. He wants to make it even better. So with his crews, on his shift, he makes sure that everybody feels welcomed. He challenges all the time with finding quizzes for him to test their knowledge, to keep them sharp. Whether it's scenario-based training, he's always looking for something. The other thing that he does in addition to managing his shift of employees, Jeff is our point person that helps us track our fleet maintenance, and so he works very closely with the county garage. He's also on the accident review board, so keeping track of all of our vehicles, making sure that all their things are taken care of. Recently, we had a problem with some of our lights that they were leaking. He worked with the manufacturer, the lights got, I don't know how many lights replaced, how many was there?
Several hundred.
Several hundred, free of charge. Two rounds of that, and they think that they finally have found the problem with it. So that's quite a task in cycling all those ambulances through to make sure all the lights are being taken care of and we're not having any corrosion or leakage with water into them. And going along with those vehicles, he helps with our new vehicle designs. So he works with a manufacturer, the idea is making sure that the crews have input on what they think is advantageous for them, as that's their office space, and so he does a lot with that. And we joke with him that is blood runs Dare County blue. So Jeff, congratulations for being selected for County Employee of the Month. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say that, yeah, I was a bit boozled. I thought I was here to talk about something else, but I just want to take one minute of your time just to thank you, not for the career that I've had with Dare County EMS. This isn't just a job. You, with your support, EMS have given me a career, and for that, I'm entirely grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Congratulations.
Before we go to public comment, if those of you that have received awards this morning will go right out through this door here to the left, please, and we'll wait just a second. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand. I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. You'll have five minutes for public comment. The green light will come on when your time begins. The yellow light will come on when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. If you're here to speak about the closure of Beacon Road and Rodanthe, that's another public hearing, please wait until that public hearing to speak to that issue. With that said, the first person that has signed up for public comment is Amy Bassnight.
Amy, welcome this morning. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here to speak to everybody today. I am just here to say I'm with Adoration Hospice. I know it was a big undertaking when Dare County, Bright Springs came in, and we acquired Dare County Home Health and Hospice. I am the director of the hospice portion, and I just wanted to let you guys know that we're here. We are doing well. We are thriving. We are hiring staff. We are taking on patients. We have patients from Hatteras all the way to the bridge. We have one patient in Harbinger, but we took her on a special case. We are serving Dare County only. We have done an amazing job at educating the hospitals from Chesapeake all the way to Greenville, because you know, we have, our Dare County residents have to be, have to go out of the area for specialized surgeries and procedures. So we have done a whirlwind of education, letting people know that we're here, and word of mouth is spreading in the community. We have, in just the last month, had several residents of Dare County calling us themselves, not just referrals from facilities. So that has really changed since the 1st of November. So I know we're out there. They're proud of what we're doing, and I just wanted to say that the community piece, I hope for your support, and for you guys to know, we do have an upcoming interview with Outer Banks Voice with people who were more involved with the acquisition. I was not involved with that. I came on in October, so they can answer any questions for the county and for the community that they might have about where we were as opposed to where we are now.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I thank you for your support.
Pardon?
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Amy. Anybody else here for public comment? Any other public comment this morning? Yes, sir.
My name is-
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Senator.
Good morning. My name's John Thomas. I live at 7084 U.S. Highway 64, Mans Harbor. I'm here to point out that Mr. Tobin bought the house behind me and fraudulently filed for a permit with the state to put a driveway across my property. I since notified the state. They rescinded the permit, but he has tried to use different methods to enter my property. And, you know, I just want to make it public record. I filed a report with the magistrate's office. They didn't think it was important, but when I filed a copy with the state secretary, she said to turn it over to the special, I mean, the state investigation bureau and the FBI, so I just wanted to make it public record here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Any other public comment this morning? Seeing none here, any public comment from Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we would close the public comment and move to item number five on the agenda. Item five is a public hearing on a request to close a portion of Beacon Road in Rodanthe. The same rules apply with regard to this public hearing as applied to public comment. Is there anyone here this morning who'd like to speak to that issue? Any public comment on that issue this morning? Chairman, I see none here. Any public comment from Buxton on that issue?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I would turn this over to Noah to present to the board.
Welcome this morning, Noah.
Morning. How are you doing? Daniel Kralakian is requesting that the unimproved eastern terminus and cul-de-sac portion of Beacon Road in Rodanthe be permanently closed pursuant to the requirements of North Carolina General Statute 153A-241, and attorney David Dixon is representing Mr. Kralakian, and he is here to speak to you all this morning.
Thank you, Noah.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, sir.
Chairman, commissioners, good morning. Happy New Years, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today. The planning department did a very good job in putting together the background information, I believe, in your packages. From the last meeting, it was clear that you all had carefully read it and was familiar with it. In fact, no one had any questions for me at that time in the last session. However, for those behind me or for those watching on TV, I did want to just say that this is a request to undedicate a small portion of Beacon Road. The area in question is not used as a road. It is a road on a plat only. It is sand, and it is dunes. By undedicating this portion, we will avoid the environmental and safety hazards for the homes that are on the ocean side of the area that are in question. There are properties on the ocean side, private properties, and those properties would receive the benefit of the part of Beacon Road that was undedicated. And again, I realize you are familiar with this. I don't want to take your time unnecessarily. Are there any questions or concerns that I could address?
I'll ask the board if they have any questions. County manager?
Sure. If I understand it, when the road is abandoned like this, the title to the property goes to the adjoining landowners. And so when the road is abandoned, your clients, the two clients with the house there would have essentially half the road, and then the McGowan place across the street would get the other half of the road. But effectively, the road would be closed. Is that right?
That's correct.
Right. So what do we do about the Tatum property and the Special K property at the end of the cul-de-sac? Because while they would get half of the road as well, they would be effectively cut off. And while they may not be buildable lots, they still own those properties and need access.
Well, I'll tell you, there is an easement for those. Granted-
There is now an easement for those?
Well, there would be an easement for those on this, on the plat that I have. You're right. They're unbuildable right now. But in the event that they became buildable, they would have access-
Well, even if they wanted to just walk on their lot-
Or walk on their property, yes. Yes. They would have an easement.
Well, my concern is, our resolution is abandoning the road, and we have sort of a catch-22. If we abandon the road, then the road becomes abandoned immediately, and we don't have the easement. So we're relying on the easement. If you give us the easement before we abandon the road, you don't have title to give the easement to. I'm trying to figure out how do we accomplish the goal to protect those two property owners.
Well, and if I may-
Sure.
There may be another attachment A, but this is the one that I prepared, which shows both that easement as well as the easement that allows for an eight-foot access easement that is on the plat. And so that, there's a note in there from the fire department, from the fire marshal. And the purpose of that is to address exactly what you're concerned about.
There's language that says access easement to lots four and five could be made a condition of the road closure. Is that what we're talking about here?
That's exactly what we're talking about.
My concern is, in the statute for the abandonment, I can't find any provision where it says you can do a conditional closure. And so I'm trying to find a way to, if the goal was to close the road, to do it, but to do it in a way that protects-
Ah, so we couldn't make that condition, is what you're saying?
Well, I believe that we certainly could. And we, my clients certainly would be prepared, as you can see on that attachment A. Again, and I'm happy to pass this up so you can see, but that was part of the-
Okay, so you're asking, in your plans, you're saying an eight-foot easement?
Well, it's actually a 20-foot easement.
That's what I was getting ready to say.
Yeah, it says 20-foot.
That's what I was getting at. Because originally, you said eight foot, then you reverted to the fire marshal's letter of a 20-foot easement.
Yes. And let me explain, and I think it'll be more helpful if this is in front of you. And again, there might be another attachment that the planning department created. And if so, I would defer to them. However, first, the fire marshal in that email had some concerns. So a 20-foot easement is there. And again, lot four and five, as you're looking at this plat, is presently unbuildable. There is no improvements there. And the Lord works in mysterious ways, but unless something drastic happens, there will not be. However, that 20-foot access easement does allow access for lots five and four. And then you'll notice that there's an eight-foot access easement. Now, I believe there's been some confusion about that, so if I may address that. That eight-foot access easement is for the lot owners in this subdivision, not for the general public. That is specifically for the seven lots that are in there. And just like the county manager noted, lot three would gain property. Lot four, five, six, and seven would gain property. No one would lose access. And the eight-foot access easement would still be available, although from a practical standpoint, at this point, no one is using that anyway because of the nature of that. I actually drove by there this morning just to check on it. And I have pictures, if any of the commissioners want to see them. But just to be clear, there is no road there now. Certainly Dare County is not going to maintain a road there. The state of North Carolina is not. It is sand and dune. And as I think we're all familiar with, whenever you're talking about either tourists or locals accessing the ocean, they are already going, if they're doing that, they are already going over public, private property in order to do that. There is still private property between the ocean and that, that, you know, that eight-foot access easement is only for the subdivision owners, the seven lot owners. The 20-foot access easement references the concerns of the fire marshal and also gives access, as the county manager was concerned, for lots four and five.
So what you're saying, evidently, is you're going to restrict, other than the seven property owners there, you're going to restrict everybody else's access to the ocean?
Well, no. Let me just, again, clarify. So there was never prior public right of access. And there still isn't. I mean, legally speaking, anybody who has been accessing the ocean from Beacon Road has been trespassing over other people's property. Now, I'm not aware of any trespassing, no trespassing signs, so I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong. But this doesn't change the status quo of what exists right now. They had de facto access. And again, I don't see how that situation can change. Just to be clear, in other words, that the access they had was already going over other people's properties. If they continue to do that, then they will still be going over other people's property.
But if that lot is closed off all the way, if their lot extends all the way across the cul-de-sac over to the other property which gets half of that distance, half of that property that's available, then it will in fact be cut off. Access to the ocean at that point in time, while they have had de facto access, that will make it cut off. If that property owner wants to put up no trespassing signs, then they have in fact eliminated the ability to use that as a beach access.
Well, again, it just doesn't change the status quo. Right now, the exact same thing that he said could be done.
I understand what the law is saying. But I'm saying, as you pointed out a while ago, that from a de facto standpoint, it's being used as a beach access. If those two lots on the end, I think your lots four and five, are not buildable anyway, what's it hurting?
Well, I don't believe anybody's ever objected to that. And I don't believe people will start objecting to it now.
I think what you're saying is correct. What I'm really getting at is, if the property of property six and seven, and more particularly, property six, I guess, extends all the way across, and that individual wants to put up no trespassing signs, then you shut it off. You have in fact closed it off then.
Well, again, from a practical standpoint, there's an eight-foot access easement that every lot owner in Beacon Road. So-
That's on north side.
That's on the north side. And again, I'm sure that you have run into this more often than I have. But I have oceanfront owners all the time with the issue that people are accessing through their property, and they're not happy about that. There's really no way to stop that. And so you're right. I mean, if you did nothing today, if you did not allow this to happen, all of those lot owners could put up no trespassing signs tomorrow and stop public access. I don't foresee that happening. But I also don't foresee anything like that happening under the circumstances of abandoning that road.
If, if we, instead of doing it conditional on an easement, what if we said we would abandon the road to a point 10 feet on either side of the line that's 5036, 5036, the line that you have, the center line of that easement? In other words, we'll abandon to the dotted line on each side. And rather than create an easement, we just don't abandon that center portion, then we've accomplished the same thing. We haven't done a conditional abandonment, and we've still got the access issues resolved.
That's absolutely an ideal solution that I believe would address-
Where would the access point be then, Bobby, if we did exactly as you? I'm looking at page 15, by the way. That map on page 15 in our deck seems to have the best visual of this thing.
So really, what would happen is, instead of abandoning the whole cul-de-sac, there'd be a 20-foot strip right down the middle that connects to Beacon Road. So you'd come up Beacon Road, and then Beacon Road, instead of being however wide it is now, would go, turn to the left, and would only be 20 feet wide. And that 20 feet would run right down the middle.
And it dead ends at the top of the cul-de-sac?
At dead exit, it dead ends then into that eight-foot access. So you basically have the status quo, only you've narrowed the road by whatever the difference is.
And where is the eight-foot access? Right at the top of the cul-de-sac?
Correct. Along that northern property line.
Huh. It's hard to see that eight-foot access. It's just a drawing with the cul-de-sac, but I presume it's just a narrow strip.
Have you got this attachment A in front of you?
I do. Oh, there it is. Yeah, that's right on the top of lot four.
So what I'm suggesting is, we simply abandon to those two dotted lines. Now, Dave, on your drawing here, you've got Beacon Road ending before we get to that other dotted line. But we'd want Beacon Road to connect to that dotted line. It wouldn't be cut off.
That makes absolute, I mean, and actually, that's probably a preferable solution, because that would maintain all of the access that is presently in existence. It's not what we had anticipated. But there is nothing in that statute that would stop us from doing exactly what you say, and just abandoning the, and it's a 60-foot right of way. So I believe that what you're proposing is to abandon the 30-foot or 40-feet that is on the ocean side and leaving the rest of Beacon Road there.
Right. Yeah. All right. Okay. Well, I mean, that is a solution that we can do. Okay, what's going to have to then happen, David?
Yes, sir.
Is, one, is it possible to do a new attachment A, that we can attach that resolution that gives the calls to those dotted lines and makes sure it connects to, does the elbow there?
Absolutely.
And then the other thing that's going to be a little bit cumbersome, I think because we've changed it significantly, we probably have to re-advertise it and come back and formally do this after whatever the advertising period is. And that would cover you and cover us?
No, and I understand. I am not sure. In fact, I know for a fact that this particular attachment A was not provided. I, in preparation for this, saw that there was an order provided that abandoned the entire thing.
Right.
But not any attachment A showing exactly-
Right.
-the configuration. So I guess what my thought would be is that because of that, that we haven't really changed anything. You've only narrowed the scope, and we wouldn't need a second hearing.
If you're comfortable, I mean, you're the one that's going to suffer if we're wrong. You're quiet. If the abandonment's done improperly, then you don't get title. And so you decide whether you need another public hearing. It won't matter to us.
Well, put that way, then I would be inclined to go along with your suggestion of a second public hearing.
So if you'd get us an attachment A to go on that order that describes what we just said, and then re-advertise it as you've done with this one, and then Donna can put it back on for another public hearing once that's been done, and then the board will be in a position to act, then, and I'm saying all this assuming the board would be prepared to move in the direction I've described, absent hearing something from the neighbors.
Yeah. I agree to move in that direction. I would question to whether this 20-foot access or narrowing of the road, that we would actually have a survey?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. He's going to do this correct with the meets and bounds on it.
Exactly.
I just had a question. This, to coin a phrase, this feels like a really long walk for a very short drink. I'm trying to figure out, why are we doing this? What is the big benefit that would justify all the-
He's going to get some additional footage on a lot that's eroding quickly to move a septic tank so that he can continue to keep his house there longer.
I saw it, I saw that, and I thought, that's the only benefit I can see, is this issue with the septic tanks. Is that it?
That is, for all four lots. There's two lots that are unimproved and presently unbuildable. There's two lots that are-
Six and seven, right.
And as it is, as of today, I believe that the septic tank for the lot, and there's affidavits from the other lot owner too, who wishes he could be here but could not. So you're absolutely right. The health and safety standards is that if we do not do this, we will have two houses that are standing without any certificate of occupancy going to waste.
Karlakian and Sacks, six and seven.
Six and seven.
Yeah, I wish we would have led with that. I kind of had to be fettering around through all these pages and paragraphs. Now I get it. Okay.
Let me point out a couple of things here as well. Being familiar with that property, when we refer to the McGowan property, you might know that as the Knights and Rodanthe house. There's been hundreds of people go down what is available on Beacon Road to check that place out, run up on the porch, have their picture taken in the house that Richard Gere was in, and stuff like that. It's a bit of a tourist attraction in there. The second thing is, on the lots four and five, you've got to have a highly functioning four-wheel-drive vehicle as it stands right now to even get in there. It is wild barrier, dunal type stuff with a slant. They would have to get decent vehicle access in there. You've got to move a lot of sand, and I'm not sure that that could happen. So it's a little bit moot. I agree with what's going on here in terms of salvaging the properties. There are private property rights that are in here. And I would like to see the two gentlemen be able to reap the benefit of what they have poured a lot of soul and effort in to sustain their houses.
And David, if you wanted to move that easement further to the west to give you a few more feet, I mean, you're buying time, and so however many feet you get is some more time.
Yes. And I believe that-
We need 20 feet.
When you were speaking, that you were talking about 20 feet, that if we abandoned the 40 feet, 60-foot access, the 40 feet, then instead of receiving 30 additional feet, they'd actually be receiving 40.
Yeah, we're going to, we'll abandon all but 20 feet. You put the 20 feet where it needs to be.
And I will certainly draw that up and get that to the planning department.
Where are the septic tanks on six and seven now, on the east side?
I believe that they are-
They're on the west side.
On the west side.
So they're on the west side?
Yes.
They already are on the west side. So that's the front of the, front of the house?
Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha.
And I tell you, Mr. Allen, I am not as familiar with the rules of the game as you are. So if there's anything I need to do as far as a motion or a request, then I'm happy to do that.
If you come back with that, we're basically starting again with just what you did before, but with a new plat.
With a new plat. I will come back with a new plat. And is there any other comments or suggestions that I would appreciate having known before I come back? Thank you very much for your time today. I appreciate the attention that you've given this matter. And I believe that you have come up with a better solution.
There's a gentleman that had his hand raised, county manager, behind you.
Sure. I'm Eric Sacks. I'm-
Come to the podium.
Sure. Sorry. I just made it. It wasn't planned on coming up. Eric Sacks, I'm the owner of 23292, which is property number seven on your maps there. And just wanted to add that, yeah, right now, public access basically is through my area there. I'm not planning on putting up any signs or anything like that, just like the gentleman said. It's- like the gentleman said, it's really about being able to put our septic in a more secure place, right, getting it further away from the ocean, the, the septic tank is fine, but the field itself continually washes out, so if we can get it higher and further back, then that will resolve that problem, same for my neighbor.
Is it washing out from rain and stormwater?
It's, it was the nor'easter, the, the most recent one about
So it's ocean overflow?
You can look at it, see how tight it is.
Going right through, past your house, out to the west side?
It did, it, during that last storm, I actually have a video of the wave that just came up with the wind pushing it and it, it came right up that, and yeah, washed out.
Ms. Sacks, do any of these improvements include moving the houses westerly or are the houses gonna remain?
No, the houses, well, I won't speak for Mr. Karakian's house, but my house, I've, I've had them come in to take a look, we had Kitty Hawk Engineering out there a few years ago and they, they made it a fortress and we recently had it evaluated, it, like I said, it's not moving, it's a fortress, it's truly just the septic is the only issue that we've got and this, this proposal would allow us a better solution that would be, of course, more environmentally friendly, so we wouldn't have this continual issue.
Gotcha, thank you.
Did I understand you to say your drain field's on the east side?
It's, it's on the, what, the, the east side of the dune, if, if that makes sense, but it's on the west side of the house.
Between the road and the house?
Right, correct.
Okay, it's, it's on the west side along with the septic tank.
Right, yes. And as I said, I know that access was, was an issue, as it is right now, there is no way to access the beach without coming through my property, just because the dune has built up so much on the other side that you have to come through.
Yeah, can people drive up to that eight-foot easement?
Same thing.
They, they can't, right now, I have a 350 four-by-four and I can't get to my house because they, the, the hill is so steep because basically the two dunes are starting to reconnect because, again, nobody's been maintaining that road on that part and we need to get in there and kind of come up with a better solution. But right now, access for the public is in question because you have to climb the hill to get over it.
Again, you're going over public property anyway, or private property, and then I have a Bronco Outer Banks edition that I'm very proud of and I couldn't get to his house when I went this morning to check.
Well, these photos don't tell us that picture, you can't see that.
Yeah, it doesn't look like much, but the topography sounds pretty daunting.
It does.
And I do have some photos I took just this last weekend, if anyone's interested.
I realize you have a number of different projects to look at and agenda items after this, I don't wanna take up any more of your time than we need to.
I think we got it.
I think we have our marching orders, if there's anything else to add, please do, but otherwise we'll let you get on to the next item.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Bring us to item, item six on the agenda, this is the presentation of the fiscal year 2021 audit and Dave Kloss and Bob Taylor will present that, Dave?
Sorry, my wife just texted me that the power's out, so anyway. This, this is your June 30th, '21 audit report, it was finished and turned into the local government commission on November 19th and then we did the audit committee with Commissioner Ross and Commissioner Bateman, I think the second week of December.
December 14th.
And we weren't planning on a second December meeting, so we pitched it to today and then we're gonna have Bob Taylor, who's our audit partner, you've met him before with Potter, and he's on remotely, he had another commitment five hours from now to present another audit report today. So you've got a hard copy that we didn't forget, like we did last year, to print for you, if he's referring to page numbers, and it is posted on the website, I'm gonna let Bob go first and then I'll come back up and do, do my short presentation.
Hey, Bob, welcome this morning, can you see us okay?
I can, Mr. Chairman, how are you today? I just wanna establish that you can
I'm great, you, you, you gonna play for us this morning? I see some drums in the background, I figured you gonna play for us as well.
I don't think that would come through the microphone.
Good, good to see ya, sorry you can't be with us, it's one of those COVID issues again, but good to see you.
No, absolutely, and I appreciate the, the opportunity that technology affords us to be able to do it, although as much as I enjoy being there in person, at least we can do it virtually, and it did keep me from getting up and leaving my house at 3:00 AM this morning, so I didn't, I didn't mind that drive too much.
Amen.
But I, I'm gonna probably be pretty brief myself, as you opened up your commissioner comments this morning with the caution of the weather, we are experiencing that right now, we've, we have a couple of hundred thousand people without power and I've already lost it once at my home and that's actually where I am from home right now, because I don't believe we have it at my office, which is about 12 miles from here, so, yeah, we're having that 40 to 50 mile an hour winds and a lot of rain, 30 miles north of us, they haven't snowed. We're kinda crazy here today, but yes, I, I think, as David said, you all hopefully have had an opportunity to review your audit for the June 30, 2021 year, it's always a pleasure for me to spend a few minutes and to share some comments with you on that. As you know, for us, you know, our part of this whole engagement, there actually are embodied in this 220-plus-page document, there are actually four separate audits that we do, there's a financial audit, there's an audit that we do, audits with some standards that are, that are issued by the government accounting office, there's also an audit on some federal programs and there are audit on some select state programs. So what you'll find on page 12 in your report is actually our audit opinion on the financial audit and then in the back section, all the way to the back of the report, of the bound copy that you have, there's three separate letters, I'm pleased to say that none of these report, opinions and reports have any exceptions to them this year, so congratulate you and your fine staff for another great job that they did for 2021.
Bob, can we just, for one second, at page eight?
Sure.
Thought maybe we'd call that out for just a moment. The Government Finance Officers Association, again, awards a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting presented to Dare County. Dave, how many times have we been able to successfully get this kind of?
That was 30.
It was 30.
30.
This was 30.
Just wanted to point out, that doesn't happen by accident, so thank you, guys, well done, sorry, Bob, please continue.
No, I fully support you in congratulating your, your folks in achieving that, to your point, yeah, that doesn't come by accident, that comes with certainly a great deal of intention, but this is a pretty daunting report, I think the two probably areas that give you the, the best read-through are on page two, which is a letter of transmittal, and that's a number of pages that really just talks about for the, for the fiscal year that went obviously from July 1 of '20 through June 30 of '21, just kind of an overview of the economic climate and just some basic financial highlights and, you know, things that are happening in, in Dare County. And then the second document is the management discussion and analysis, which begins on page 15, and this is where it really just presents to you in narrative form, the results of operations for the year for all the different funds and everything else that goes on.
And Bob, if I may
Just a couple of highlights.
If I may, just real quickly, and Dave, I would ask you on this one too, on the bottom of page four, we've seen these numbers quite frequently in the past year, and if we go across from left to right at the very, very bottom of page four of the book, the growth in occupancy tax, local sales tax, all of those taxable items is extraordinary versus the prior history going back to 2012. I know we can't predict the future, of course, my question is to both Bob and Dave, do we believe we may have a new floor from which more modest growth numbers may result, or have we seen a, a spike, if you will, in the graph that goes up significantly and just as significantly returns to levels of 2008 or nine or, I'm sorry, 18 or 19 or 20, which could have quite a significant impact on county revenues? Dave?
I think that's gonna be the hard part of the next budget that you go through, how much is, how much was this bike, it's lasting through a second year so far?
Yeah, it's kinda like if we establish a new floor from which we march at 2% a year for the next 10 years, or
Right.
did we just hit the ceiling and now we're gonna bounce back to the basement, which would be quite difficult.
Right.
That's a 25% increase over from 2020 to 2021, I mean, that's powerful growth.
I know, and the natural inclination is to say, well, there's our new floor, guys, from which we operate.
But typically, we would look at five years or more to determine a trend, we wouldn't take a trend off of a two-year average normally for anything else that we do.
No, no, I understand, Bobby, my point is, should we look at what happened in '21 and budget a 10% reduction next year as we return to a more normal level of revenue, or should we budget a 1% growth off of 2021? That's, I mean, I don't know that we have an answer, but that's the question that pops into my mind every time I look at these numbers.
Right, and the second is more like what you did for '22, so the question will be, what's '23 gonna look like?
And we did a two-year budget last time
No, I know.
using 2019 numbers, so we, we have not used this, these types of numbers baked
You use growth percentages from 2019, you didn't return to absolute dollar amounts from 2019.
Correct.
That's, I know, that's a significant difference.
Right.
And, and again, Bob, you're an independent auditor on this, do you have any thoughts on that?
A, a great discussion, and I think that, as you all know better than I do, you know, Dare County is in a very, very unique situation, much different than most other counties and municipalities in North Carolina, just because of where you are and the type of tax base that you have with, with vacation and rentals and that type of a situation. And so if you think back to the, the environment that we've been in, in the last 24 months almost, the economic climate and because of the pandemic, you know, we first got into it back in February, March of 2020, and it wasn't but a month or two after that, in June of 2020, that you passed the budget that we're dealing with right now, that we're reporting on right now. So, you know, we entered into this reported fiscal year, the June 30, '21 fiscal year with a lot of caution, I'm not sure there was much optimism, but a lot of caution, especially on the expenditure side, because we didn't know what was gonna happen with our revenue stream, we didn't know what was gonna have with sales tax or any of these other taxes that we rely upon so heavily. And so, as indicated in this audit report, you know, our, our budgeted expenditures were pretty significantly under what our actual expenditures were. But because of the uniqueness of Dare County and with the pandemic dead, when people stopped traveling abroad and stopped leaving North Carolina and, and people could work remotely and do all these things, then they obviously flocked to Dare County. And when they flocked to Dare County, then all of a sudden, you know, your commerce, your local commerce went up significantly, which is certainly evidence in the, in the sales tax. And then what's happened in the real estate market with just the values and the pricing of houses and everything else, and people are trying to take their equity out of their homes and then all of a sudden it's affecting some of these other taxes that you have, the land transfer tax. I think, you know, you are in a little bit of a bubble, you know, I would, as, as much as we would all like to see it sustain these high levels, you know, at some point in time, maybe it levels back out and, and as you refer to it, what is the new, the new floor? You know, I think only time will tell, but, you know, we reap the benefits of it and had a great financial year, so, you know, it's kinda hard, hard to project and, and who knows what, what the amount is that we should pull back, you know, being conservative, I think it makes sense to pull back some, but in doing a two-year budget or a three-year budget, that certainly helps us to be able to look at it, you know, through, through another lens and then adjust accordingly, which is oftentimes what we have to do and, you know, as David said, you know, we were there last in the fall of 2020, working on the June 30, '20 audit, it was when we had kind of, you know, had weathered the pandemic for six months then and, and I remember several conversations that, that David and I had already talking about, the sales tax spike was, was really peaking and, and plus we had had the opportunity to get some of these other federal assistance monies, which, you know, came to us to help us with pandemic-related costs. And so, you know, a lot of things happened then and it just, you know, fortunately continued, continued that momentum through 2021, so, that's just kinda my look at it from, along these office and independent source taking a look at it, if that makes any sense at all.
Yeah, thank you, my, my only goal here was to try to get an assessment level of risk, risk in terms of
Yep.
a floor or not, are there external indicators that indicate it's reasonable to use this as a floor with very modest assumptions of future growth versus it is unreasonable to do so and we ought to be considering a very real possibility of a decline? I don't know the answer to the, but again, that's the thought that goes through my head every time I look at these numbers, anyway, I'm done with that questions, thank you, guys.
So just a couple of quick highlights and then I'll turn it over to Dave for his PowerPoint, but, you know, your owner-signed fund balance and general fund is at almost a 30% rate as compared to budgeted expenditures and I think your target for Dare County is 21%, so we are in a very healthy position there, last year it was 27%, so we're up from 27% to 30%. The general fund itself added about $10 million to fund balance, and again, that's because of the significant growth that we had in a couple of revenue streams and the sales tax and occupancy tax, land transfer tax, as well as great cost control, so, you know, those are very, very positive signs, the water fund had a good year, the water fund actually increased at about a $300,000 increase and, which is a very strong indicator of where we headed with that, and that probably, again, it was a result of we just had more people in their homes using our water, so we had probably higher water sales than we've ever had before. Property tax collection rate still is, is just off the chart exceptional, you're right, almost at 100%, I mean, last year was 99.68%, so it's, it's, that's just a very, very strong indicator. Another great section of the audit financial statements that I love, and I point this out every year, is that back section where you've got a lot of 10-year comparative data, both democratic, you know, with, with financial data as well as the, just all other kinds of, of numbers that show change and growth in, in departments and everything else in Dare County, so it's, it's a good place to look with that. So with this, I will just turn it over to Dave and let him get into his PowerPoint presentation and then I'll be glad to come back in and answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Bob.
And we'll go quickly with this, because Bob's already covered some of it, all right. As he, as Bob mentioned, you know, an, an unqualified opinion from the audit, there's no management letter, which is an additional letter for things that audit issues weren't qualified as a finding or, or an issue. He mentioned the additional opinions, there's four additional opinions in the back of the report that covers federal and state grant programs, we didn't have any findings or question costs and every year I jinx ourselves and say that the last grant-related audit finding was 1996, and that says a lot about especially social services and everything that they do and how they do it. The grants, they, they were required to test as major, the federal programs were federal, were Medicaid and the CARES Act funding, and then the state that were, were required to be tested as major were Medicaid, the Hurricane Dorian Grant, the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency, the water, there was a Water Resources Development Grant, which was the Manio Channel dredging that the county took the grant and did administer the contract for the town, and then the Connect NC Bond, which was the bond money that came from COA to go to, toward construction of the COA building. There was almost $6 million of federal awards, just over five of state awards, that's higher than normal, normally Commissioner Ross asked the question in the, in the audit committee, meaning normally it's about $5 million of federal and about $2 million of state, the state again was the Channel dredging grant and the Office of Recovery and Resiliency. And I mentioned this because when it happens, your audit fees will be higher and it didn't happen again this year for the second year in a row, but Bob might be required, if we get on the list, to do testing here for the state audit and you have to pay for it. and you have to pay for it. So, and as Commissioner Ross mentioned, we got the certificate achievement from the GFOA, and that was our 30th one in a row. And I always put a slide up for two pages that nobody, including the rating agencies, pay any attention to, and that's Pages 30 and 31. And that's everything in the report combined into two pages on a full accrual basis. And you split it up based upon what we call business type and governmental. Business type is just water. Governmental is everything else. I will say, you have a positive number for governmental, $41 million. And typical for a county in North Carolina is that's a negative number.
Sure.
The things below here, negative effects on that position. Most counties, that's a negative number because we issue debt for schools, and we have to, on these pages, we have to record that debt, but we don't get to record the asset for it. So, for us, that's almost $33 million. Then you have to do the full accrual basis for other items, which OPEB liability, which is retiree health liability, so all your current retirees, all your current employees until the day they pass away. That's the, the estimate of what that'll cost in the future. CND landfill closure is $9 million. And again, that's once that closure starts until the 30 years later that you're done with it. But we have to calculate it and show it. Same thing for the pension, the statewide pension. The county share of that pension liability is $19 million. But North Carolina is the fourth-best-funded pension plan in the nation. And then for the law enforcement officers liability, separation allowance, that liability is just over $3 million, but you funded 2.5 of that. And just two weeks ago, it took six months, but I got the State Treasurer's Office to approve our account. So we'll be putting that 2.5, 2.5 million into that trust fund this month. And then Commissioner Ross mentioned the, the revenue chart. This is out of the management discussion and analysis. And you can see the far-right-hand column, local sales tax. That's sales tax generated within Dare County was up 30%. The statewide, 16%. Article 42 is half and half. And I can't get an answer on why that 31% is higher than either one of the other numbers. It could be audit stuff with the State Department of Revenue or someone made a mistake in the payment. But, you know, they, they, they interim as they occur, so we, we just don't know.
It's all part of the mystery. It's all part of the mystery.
OCC tax was a 50% increase. Your land transfer tax, which is the capital investment fund, is, was 126%. And registered deeds, which is in, which is in the general fund, was 111%. Now, all those had an effect on what happened during the year and fund balances. So on this page, your general fund, that's, that's the consolidated number. So that's the operating fund, the 10 fund, the capital investment, disaster recovery, North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency, law enforcement officers, all together added $24 million. Beach Nurishment added 3.5. Inlet maintenance, about $500,000. And insurance had a, a year like we've never had, added 1.6 million. And I'll get to that in just a minute. Now, that $24 million on the left is made up of, of these numbers. 10.7 million in the general fund, that's the operating fund. And that was driven by that 16% to 32% increase in sales tax and occupancy tax of 50%. The capital investment fund, 10.7 million addition, that was driven by the land transfer tax. And there is some restricted sales tax on that one also. The grand total of the fund balances, and I'm going to skip a slide and go back, but by fund, your general fund, the operating was 52, 52 million, capital investment 16, disaster recovery 1.5, law enforcement officers 2.5, for the total of 72. And then, this is a footnote from the audit report. If you want, it's Page 105. But the grand total of all those funds together is $72.3 million. This lists all the legal restrictions of that 72. And when you get down to the next to the bottom number, your 21% fund balance target is $24.4 million. Then you take the grand total and deduct all those restrictions and those policy restrictions, and you ended the year with $9.9 million more than your target. Last meeting, you used about $1 million of that nine. So your round number is $9 million to the good. And I know this is going to be something we're going to have to discuss and look at during the budget. And, you know, things that we've talked about that's on the horizon, I left one out. But, you know, rating stability, you, you all know these affordable housing, beach nourishment, capital program, disaster recovery, that law enforcement liability, the retiree health liability, CND liability, and stormwater. So you're going to have an interesting budget cycle. The insurance fund, it ended fund balance, the ending fund balance was $4.2 million. And I'm going to go ahead and one. This shows you the fund balances over the last, I don't know, 15 years or so. The green is the change, the blue is the actual ending fund balance. So you go back to 2013, we were over $4.5 million in the hole because of just mainly health plan, just horrible years. You've implemented the wellness program, you've implemented the clinic. They've done a lot of work. And now, we're almost, we're almost at $4.5 million. I've never, we've never had a year where this happened before, where if you just take the straight benefit payments from the health plan, they went down 14.81%. Now, what we do, though, is we have those benefit payments, but we buy specific stop-loss insurance so that no one participant, no one person can cost us more than $200,000 a year. So you have to net those two against each other to see what really happened. But even when you do that, we had, the net was down almost 5% for the year. And that's just, that's kind of really unheard of. What we're doing for next year's budget is we've got a risk management consultant under contract that works with Greensboro and Wayne County and a couple others in the state. They're going to look at that fund balance, going to look at what we do now for deductibles, for property liability, even workers' comp, and see if there's other things we should, you know, historically, we've done low deductibles. We've never looked at self-insurance for workers' comp. So, as I said, we're going to do a lot of stuff looking toward the next budget cycle.
Dave, don't you think what's helped that net benefit cost has been attributed to us in the last several years, creating that wellness program?
Yes, sir.
To the extent that we've done. I mean, that's been a, that's had to have had this major impact on why that net benefit cost is
It's impacted all the participants, but it's also helped our, our highest-level cost participants are those that retire before they're 65 and they stay on the regular plan
Right.
Until they, you know, reach 65. But it's, it's helped with those claims as well.
I would also say, streamlining, we continue to streamline county government, eliminating waste where we need personnel who are not necessarily critical, where we can still maintain the level of service by doing combinations. This has all helped that, that fund.
Well, that's true. All right. Bob Taylor mentioned the water fund. He had 587 new connections, which was almost 3%. Other than when we added the new accounts for expanding Roanoke Island, that's the highest year we've ever had. The peak day went from $12.2 million a day to $13.2 million a day. You had a 12.4% increase in water sales with no rate increase. And the water fund, this isn't a big number, but it's the best year we've had since 2017, where the net, the bottom net, we added $300,000. But that's, the water fund has to be full accrual. So that $300,000 adding to the bottom line is after recognizing a retiree health expense of $455,000 and a pension expense of $561,000. So the water fund had a very, very good year. Our coverage last year, revenue bond coverage was 2.01. The rate model predicted 2.07, and they actually ended up at 2.86. As I mentioned, we've got some other large, of our other larger funds that we have to call major funds in the report. Your ending fund balance in, in beach nourishment was $33 million. The model had predicted 27, driven by a 50% increase in, in, you know, 2% of occupancy tax, inlet maintenance fund. I mentioned this, it's got a $15.5 million fund balance. That $15 million fund balance is going to stay there while the loan, you know, it'll reduce as the loan is forgiven, but it's going to stay there. Capital investment model ended up, or the capital investment fund, just over $16 million, 126% increase in land transfer cost. And then Bob mentioned the statistical section in the back, which I think is the, if you want kind of a reference or an encyclopedia, this is it. It's got 10 years' worth of data in it for all of these things, especially Page 207, demographic and economic, is a very useful page. And just quickly, some things from that section. One thing rating agencies look at is your general fund debt service as a percentage of your expenditures. You know, we're generally, anybody's okay with 18, 20%, which we have been in the past. What they like to see is somewhere around 15 to 16%. And you've gone through that and are down last year to 13.7. As Hozie mentioned earlier, you had a revale. And after the revale, your sales assessment ratio was 102%. But that was before the state does a sample of sales each July. So last July, they did a sample of sales. And the next value you see will be based on that sample, and it will obviously go down. On the left, you can see the growth in personal property listed for property taxes. On the right, the same, the growth in motor vehicles. One thing to note there, in 2020, that number is artificially low. And 2021 is artificially high because you had, it was either five months or six months where vehicle registrations, you were, everyone was given a grace period. And the property tax isn't actually levied until the vehicle's registered. So you had some that slipped from fiscal '20 to '21, and then some that you got to double up on in '21.
How do I read the chart again? The personal property is about $450 million?
Yes, sir.
Is that change in value?
No, that's the total value of personal property.
Personal property, wow, okay.
And the same for vehicles, I would guess 570 or so.
Okay.
Food stamp activity, the teal color is the number of households. The greens are the number of individuals. And you can see with COVID, there's been an increase, but not, not to the levels that we saw after the, the Great Recession. And then finally, personal income throughout all the county is just over $2.1 billion. And then on the right, taxable retail sales hit $2.055 billion.
Phenomenal, that's just, that's incredible. The chart's just stunning.
So if you have any questions for Bob or myself, here.
Okay, anyone have any questions of Dave or Bob?
Yeah, just want to confirm, Dave, with our email exchange regarding American Rescue Plan funds and the 7.2 million as, as unearned, but could be applied toward housing or other funding activities for the county?
Right, and in all the numbers we just showed you, we're not allowed to record that as revenue yet.
I got it.
Can't record it as revenue
Right.
You spend it and earn the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
So that brings us to item seven.
Is Bob still on?
Yes, sir, I am.
Bob, Happy New Year, and thank you so much. Appreciate all you do for us.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman, and other commissioners. Wish you guys a Happy New Year as well, too. Since I've been on the call with you, it has been pouring down snow. And we have, I went from 78 degrees here yesterday, and now I've got about a half-inch of snow on the ground.
Oh, my goodness. Well, be safe, be safe.
Thank you.
County manager.
Okay, we'll move on now to item seven, and that's a banking services contract renewal. And Dave has that as well.
All right, we're, I'm in front of you with this because it is a five-year contract, and the board has to approve it instead of, well, we probably bring it to you anyway. But what we're asking you is that the agreement for, the current agreement we have with PNC Bank for different services be renewed for a five-year term. It is a per-unit pricing contract, just like you'd bid a, a water line. So the pricing's based on what we actually use of all those services each month. But the price would be fixed at these levels for the entire five-year term. We use the current contract, we use it for deposit services, branch, lockbox, integrated receivables, account balances, zero balance, ACH, all the bank reporting, all the bank account access, card services, and verification services. And it did expire December 31st. And now we're on a month-to-month contract, subject to change in price. We did a banking services RFP in 2014, selected PNC. That was a four-year agreement. We renewed it for additional three years on January 1st of '19, which is hard to get my head around. But the point with, from us is that I'm, I and my entire staff couldn't be more satisfied with the service we have. We have quarterly meetings. I couldn't have a more responsive and, and quick-reaction staff that we have from people. And honestly, they're all in Raleigh. Everybody we deal with is in Raleigh and Charlotte. But we just couldn't be more satisfied. During a typical month, we compared the pricing to, you know, we took the activity for a typical month compared to pricing to what we had in the January '19 contract, and it's 11%, 11.5% more, which is 3.8% per year, which seems a little high. But the CPI for last November was almost 7%. And the earnings credit rate, which is the net interest rate we get paid on our deposits, is 4.5 basis points, and the capital management trust is still paying 1. And what satisfies me the most is they're giving us what they call their preferred customer scale, which right now, they're only giving that to City of Raleigh, Wake, Cumberland, Harnett, and Onslow Counties. I think Onslow's just a proposal, hasn't been accepted yet. But, so we're asking your approval for the five-year contract.
Anybody have any questions, Dave, from PNC contract?
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve the contract as presented by the vice chairman.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Chairman, items eight and nine will be presented by Donna Creve, our planning director.
Good morning, Donna.
Good morning, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
This is a special use permit, so we need to be
I know, my book is freezing.
Good morning.
We'll take a break after these two.
So this is an extension request for a special use permit for Waves Retreat LLC, which is in Waves, North Carolina. The developer was granted a two-year period to secure building permits. And he's had some personal issues and has not been able to do so. So he has asked for an extension of that request. And because it's a special use permit, it needs to come in front of the board. The planning board did look at it at their last meeting and was agreeable to the two years. And so that's the only condition that's being changed, is an additional two years for them to secure building permits.
Okay, so that's, so that's all we, all we need now is a request to move for additional 24 months?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions, Donna? Board's pleasure?
I move, Mr. Chairman, that additional 24 months be granted to Waves Retreat for their project, construction of the project.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch.
Seconded.
It's been seconded by Commissioner House and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
The next item that I have is a rezoning request. This is a zoning map amendment for Buxton Village zoning map. And Ms. Julia Taft, who is here this morning with us, she has, has an offer to purchase a piece of property there in Buxton for 8651 NC 12 Highway in Buxton. It's been used historically for a childcare center that's been closed and she's hoping to purchase that and remodel the building to use for workforce housing for her employees. She owns several businesses and she's hoping to remodel that from its current configuration and accommodate some apartments in there. The property is currently zoned R2A, which does not allow multifamily structures. And in her discussions with me, I suggested that she seek a rezoning of the property versus a text amendment of R2A. Rezoning would change the actual classification from R2A to R3, which does allow multifamily houses at 10 units per acre. There's a lot of R2A that applies in Dare County, it applies in Buxton, it applies in Collington, it applies in Avon. And so if we went in and amended the R2A for multifamily, it would be a broader brush, if you will, than what we're doing here. And so she did submit an offer to purchase with that and it's, and the gentleman who owns the property now is aware that she's seeking to rezone the property from R3. So it's a change from residential to residential, just a different classification, if you will. As I noted, she is hoping to remodel that, but she has to have it rezoned first if that, if she's successful with that. The planning board did review this at their meeting in December. And part of the planning board discussion is whether it's consistent with the Dare County Land Use Plan and you'll see that I included in your packet a copy of policy, LUC number four, that specifically discusses, discusses the diversification of housing structures and, and manner of housing for workforce housing. So it can be determined that it's consistent with that. In order for the board to consider rezoning of the property, we do have to have a public hearing and that first date is January the 18th at 5:00. And that is the motion that I'm looking for today. Ms. Taft is here, if you have any questions for her. If you have any questions for myself.
Anyone have any questions, Ms. Taft? It's a sign of the times now, isn't it, Ms. Taft, that you gotta, you gotta provide your own public housing just to get employees. It's, it, it, all the more critical that this board certainly take advantage of the money that the state has issued us and try to get this resolved in Dare County. But I, you see this more and more, that individuals are have to, having to do it on their own. I commend you, Ms. Taft. So there's a motion on the floor, I mean, there's a request to hold a public hearing on January 18th at 5:30. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tobin and House. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, before we leave this item, when it comes back in order to move forward with it, this has the potential for someone to say this was spot zoning because it's one lot in the middle of a different zoning classification. It's okay to do that if we make appropriate findings and have a reasonable basis to do that, a factual basis. So I've talked to Donna about being able to present that to you. I'm bringing it to the applicant's attention as well so that when you come back to this at our next meeting and if you're, if you are inclined to, to grant this, then we want to be sure that we include in that for our record a reasonable basis so that we can support this should it ever get challenged in the future. So just to be sure you're aware.
Thank you, county manager.
And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Donna. County manager? Uh, no, we, we move on. I'm gonna request we take a break after item 11.
Okay. Item 10 is a RFQ for Stormwater Master Plan update. Barton?
How are y'all doing today? Happy New Year.
Fine, good morning. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. The first item is a RFQ and budget amendment for the Stormwater Master Plan update. We received $150,000 from the FEMA Flood Mitigation Assistant Grant. That is to update the Stormwater Master Plan, identify and map county stormwater infrastructure and then also create two stormwater designs for critical areas. An RFQ for a consultant was advertised on November 5th, 2021. The planning director, assistant planning director, purchasing officer and myself reviewed the statement of qualifications on December 6th and selected Withers Ravenel. They have experience in Dare County and coastal North Carolina and with projects such as, such as this. What I'm seeking is a approval of the budget amendment and also approval of Withers Ravenel as the engineering firm and for the county manager to negotiate a contract.
Okay, does the board have any questions?
I, I just had one quick one. Do we know an approximate timeframe, once Withers Ravenel begins, that we might see the output of their analysis and recommendation?
The timeframe they gave was 12 months. So we negotiated a contract in the next few weeks and then within 12 months, 10 to 12.
I was just looking out the window over Dorothy's shoulder and I thought I saw the need for arc construction to begin immediately. We might need it this afternoon.
We did, yeah.
Exactly.
You can head down Highwood 12 with me here in about an hour.
We're gonna have to swim down.
We're getting eight homes.
You worried about being flooded, Commissioner? We're elevated on the building and plus the dinosaur's also elevated.
Well, that's true. I can climb on the shoulders of a giant like yourself.
Why are my feet wet?
But within a year, you would expect that.
Yes, that, that's the timeframe they gave.
Because this is all an outgrowth of that massive colossal rain that we experienced in, was that August, Bobby, a couple of years ago?
July.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I'm, you know, again, I know things move slowly through the halls of government, but the sooner the better, so thank you.
There's a nice consortium of people working on behalf of the county on that. They're off and running, taking, taking a deep dive on it.
Yeah.
It's good.
Okay, any other questions?
I'd like to approve the budget amendment, approve Withers Ravenel's engineering firm to update the Stormwater Master Plan and authorize the county manager to negotiate a contract.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So the next item is a resolution, application for rulemaking for a no-wake zone extension in Avon. There was a complaint received from a resident last year. Wildlife Resources Commission investigated, investigated that complaint of obstructed views, blind spots and personal watercraft and boats operating near paddleboarders, kayaks, kayakers, swimmers, et cetera. Wildlife Resources Commission found issues and recommended that a no-wake zone is extended. And this is in the area of Big Island near Mill Creek. To continue the process, WRC requires a resolution from the Board of Commissioners to submit an application. Once that application is submitted, the Wildlife Resources Commission puts a rule in the NC Register. There's public comment for 60 days, after which the WRC considers that no-wake zone rule. Then there's a few more things I have to go through, so it ends up being a six to eight month process. But if you all do submit the application, it'd probably be sometime in the summer, June to August, that buoys could start being installed. There's two buoys total that need to be installed. And this is an extension. There already is a no-wake zone in Mill Creek. So just asking for a, for you all to adopt a resolution to an application for rulemaking.
Dave, any questions?
Yeah, on page 45 of the application, it has a checkmark of public swimming or recreational area with the establishment of a rope swimming area or placement of no-wake regulatory buoys be appropriate. And neither one of those boxes were checked.
Where are we at, Steve?
On page 40, actually 42 of our docket.
42 of the docket, okay, sorry.
And 45 of the, page 45 of the application.
I'm not sure which attachment that would be. I don't have the numbers right in front of me.
Page 45. Yeah, page 45 of your application.
Okay.
Public safety hazards.
Yeah.
Public swimming or recreation, that, oh, that's checked.
That's checked.
They might have just missed it on a, on that one, on their investigation, I believe.
Because I would assume that would not be a rope swimming area.
Oh, yes, yeah, I do know what you're talking about, yeah. No, it won't be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go read the resolution.
Pardon? Yeah, you, you'll get the county manager to read the resolution if he would, so that...
This is a resolution requesting rulemaking for the extension of a no-wake zone located adjacent to Mill Creek and Big Island in the village of Avon. Whereas the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission completed an assessment of the area and made a recommendation to expand the current no-wake zone. And whereas the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission found the proposed no-wake zone is needed to ensure the safety of the recreating public in this area. And whereas the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission will enforce the no-wake zone once buoys are installed. Whereas the Dare County Waterways Commission unanimously recommended the Board of Commissioners of Dare County submit an application for water safety rulemaking to expand the no-wake zone in accordance with the attached map. And whereas Dare County has given public notice of intention to apply for rulemaking on waters within the county's territorial jurisdiction, now therefore being resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Dare County, North Carolina hereby adopts the following resolution for the state to consider expanding the no-wake area in accordance with the attached map this third day of January 2022.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner House. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you all, thank you.
We'll take a 10-minute break. I'll call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order. Turn it over to the county manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item 12. This is the Dare County Beach Nursery. These are the town projects. At our last meeting, you approved Weeks Marine as the low bidder on that project. We're at the next step in that process and now you have to give notice of award and approve the owner contract and authorize me to sign the agreement with them, the contract with them.
Okay, pleasure of the board.
Approve the, motion to approve the owner contract agreement and authorize county manager to sign the owner contract agreement.
Okay, is a motion on the floor by Commissioner House. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, items 13, 14 and 15 will be handled by Dave Clausen.
These, all three of these are for Avon and Buxton Beach Nursery. The first one is to update the budget, the capital project ordinance for the project. Everything is known and set except for four items, which is the coastal science and engineering, post-construction monitoring and testing amount, that's an estimate of $482,000. They're evaluating the requirements of the National Park Service permit, see what they have, but I need, I'm gonna need that number from them this week. Buxton sand fencing and Avon sand fencing, those totaled 231,000 and we just opened the bids for those. We had five bids and then the low bid was 74,119. And Ha Ching has used that company before, so she's comfortable with that bid. So I'll come back and change that again. And then I gotta finalize the debt cost issues and get a better number. And then the interesting thing is Bob Glasson, who is the Beach Nursery Specialist, has always said, we're gonna combine these projects and whichever way it works out, we're gonna take the lowest cubic yard cost and that'll be what FEMA pays for their number of cubic yards. Well, North Carolina Emergency Management and now FEMA in Atlanta is saying, we not, we're not sure that works with the regulations and we might be changing it to the Buxton-only cost. If we do that, they'll, instead of paying $13.33 per cubic yard, they'll be paying $14.83 per cubic yard, which will be $700,000 more than what we're showing in this schedule. My problem is I gotta issue the debt. I gotta work all that out and figure out with bond council how we'll, how we'll handle that. But either way, we'll have, if that happens, we'll have the money to use toward the project. So our request is just that you adopt the amendment to the capital project ordinance and I will be back with an update.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, that was a motion to approve, adopt the amendment for the capital project order by Commissioner Couch. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
Just to be clear, the summary on page 72, the county portion is 21.7 million. That would go down to 21 million because above, you can see we use 1333, so that would reduce us to 21.
Right, but my problem is I know how FEMA works time-wise.
Yeah.
And it's not likely I'm gonna have an answer before we have to go.
No, no, I understand. I'm just saying that would reduce it that much further.
That's what would happen.
Okay.
You know, I've got a question on page 72 as well. Under sand fencing and vegetation?
Yes.
First time you run into it, it says both.
Right.
That's both projects. And then sand fencing vegetation, again, later on, that's for Buxton. Is that 71,000, that's the part FEMA's gonna kick in for?
Yes, for Buxton, they're gonna pay for all of the sand fencing and vegetation.
Gotcha.
And our, the timing around this project, Dave, do we, if I can ask you, refresh my memory on that?
Let me cover that in the second, next agenda item.
Okay.
All right, any further questions? Pleasure of the board then. Oh, we, it's, we've already, Couch is, Commissioner Couch has made the motion, Commissioner House has seconded. So those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Item number 13 is just a reimbursement resolution for this project, for the debt. We're not sure we even need to do it, but this is a just to be safe because there is a 20% of the project cost limit and how much we've paid CSE already for design and permitting. This will just make us safe with the IRS. So what we're asking you to do is adopt the resolution that's known as a reimbursement resolution that will enable us to reimburse ourselves out of bond proceeds for money we've already spent.
Pretty, just cut and dried, it's boilerplate.
Yep, yeah. Is that a motion by Commissioner Couch?
Yes, sir.
Sir.
It's been seconded by Commissioner House once again. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. And then item 14 is the first resolution, the initial resolution for the board to pass for the debt for Buxton and Avon Beach Nursery. We're actually gonna be doing this in two pieces that are issued together as one, but there's two tranches.
Yeah, I saw that.
The series A is the normal 21 million that we're gonna do over five years. The series B is what we're borrowing, waiting on FEMA reimbursement. When FEMA reimburses us, we'll pay series B off. And that'll be outstanding over a maximum of two years with a call, callable after one year. It'll be a private, private placement with a bank. It'll be issued as additional bonds to the debt we just did for the town beach nursery where we pledged the Justice Center as the collateral. So the collateral piece is all done. We don't have anything new to pledge. And thanks to our under, our underwriter replacement agent and our FA, they got that negotiated with the bank that took that first deal, that that's okay. And then on the calendar, as you know, we opened the bids on the 17th. The required letter to the General Assembly Committee on the 30th. I submitted the LGC application on the December 20th and we put the financing requests for proposals, the term sheet on the street on the 20th. Today, you're gonna adopt, you've already done the reimbursement resolution. You do this resolution, which calls for a public hearing at your next meeting. You've done the budget for the project. You've done the budget for the project. You've approved the construction contract. I should have put out that the financing bids are due on January the seventh. And the notice of public hearing is being published on the fifth?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Then you'll hold, uh, we have to have the core permits by January fourteenth, a week from Friday. Ha Ching still tells me we're okay, but I might ask Bobby to make another one of his phone calls.
Hey, Ben.
Cross your fingers.
That's, that's the LGC agenda date. That's their deadline, so if we have to go through that again with them, we will, but hopefully not. You'll hold a public hearing on the eighteenth. The LGC meets on February the first. And then now the LGC's okay with letting the board do their final resolution after their meeting, so we're gonna have you do that on February the seventh. That's your first meeting. And we will have to have Commissioner Woodard and O'Man at Dare County Public Facilities Corporation meeting then, too. And then we'll close on February fifteenth. This resolution makes certain findings of fact, and Bond Counsel has changed these. This isn't the same as you've seen in prior resolutions, and these, I think they're trying to make a point with, uh, the local government commission, cause these are the specific items that the local government commission is supposed to make a finding on to approve the debt. That the contract is necessary and expedient, that under the circumstances, the contract's preferable to a general obligation bond, that sums that fall due under the contract are adequate and not excessive, that the county's debt management procedures and policies are good, that the increase in taxes, if any, and there is none, is necessary to meet the sums to fall due under the contract and will not be excessive, and county's not in default of any of its debt obligations. So what you're authorizing with the resolution is authorizing the county manager and finance director to proceed with the contracted amount not to exceed 28.5, and that's the regular piece plus the FEMA piece.
So we're really gonna end up, hopefully, looking at 20. So the 28.5 is lots of headroom.
Well, 21 plus the six million of FEMA, so 27, and we're using 28.5 just in case.
But my point is when FEMA reimburses us, then we pay off those bonds, so we're back to 20.
But, but you still have to include it in the not to exceed number.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of headroom in the not to exceed.
Yes, sir. Yes. You are gonna direct me to file an application with the local government commission, which I've already done, and you're gonna authorize myself and the manager to retain Parker Poe Adams-Burnsing as Bond Counsel, DEC and Associates as financial advisor to Bank of New York Mill and Trust Company as our trustee, and Piper Sandler as our placement agency, agent, which is our normal financing team. And you're setting a public hearing on January eighteenth concerning the execution and delivery of the contract amendment. So our request is to adopt the initial resolution.
Move to adopt the resolution.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to adopt the resolution.
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Chairman, that brings us to item sixteen on the agenda. This item doesn't require any action. This is the annual grant from the Economic Improvement Council. They present it to you to look at, review, and if you have any comments about it, then we can record those comments on the record and share those comments with them as they move forward. So no action needed, but if you have comments, then now's the time to share those, and Cheryl and I'll then provide those comments to the Economic Improvement Council.
Any comments from the board?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Yep, employment number one, and then housing number two priority, so they're in line with us.
Yep. All right, no action required. Correct county manager.
No action required. All right. With that, then we'll move on to item seventeen. This is a budget amendment for large item pickup. I don't know, several meetings ago, I came to you and told you of some of the issues we were having with large item pickup, told you that we would like to bid this out this year, and, cause we still needed to do it, but we didn't have the rest, the people, if you will, available to do that this year. You asked us to move forward with that, so we have done that bidding. We've got those bids. The low bid was to SDR. We had two bidders. One was for 277, 250. The other one was for 271.5. Southern Disaster Recovery was the low bidder. They were responsive and responsible. We've evaluated the bids. And so we'd like to now move forward with the, the low bidder. The low bid came in above what we anticipated the cost would be, and so there's a budget amendment in there as well to move funds around in order to cover the additional cost of the large item pickup.
Historically, how, how much did it, when, when we were doing it as a county, how much would it cost?
I don't know, because we paid, we, basically, we didn't run the recycle routes, and we took our staff and did it with our folks on the clock in the normal rates. There was no increase to our costs. It just slowed our services down a little bit. This is the first time that we've actually bid out the whole process.
I didn't know if we had a, a baseline of what it basically cost us.
The only thing we have comparable, and I don't know how to compare this, cause it's so much smaller, is when we do, you know, debris pickup after a storm, but you're talking about a whole different operation.
Yeah.
So the bid came in 115,000 over what we thought.
Again, we don't, we don't have anybody to do it. I mean, we, we are in a severe manpower shortage with...
This is, this is either we do it or we don't do it, and if we're not gonna do it, we need to let people know now so they'll start putting things out on the road. If we are gonna do it, then we've gotta have enough headroom to do it, cause, I mean, we're also guessing a little bit as to what it's gonna cost, cause we don't really know how much they're gonna put out. We've taken past numbers and tried to extrapolate some tonnage and all that for them to be able to bid.
Yeah.
We've taken some timing numbers and tried to give them some information so they'd know how to bid, but ultimately, if more debris is put out or more large items are put out than what are normally done, then that could affect, you know, the cost as well. We'd have to come back to you.
Yeah, and, and I agree with you, Commissioner Couch. It's one of those things, if we don't do it now, we're gonna have a bigger problem later on, so. Move to approve.
Well, this, just so you know, one other thing you need to know. Part of the, the money from this is coming from the sou- the reason we can't do it is because we can't hire enough people. The only good thing I have is we have lapped salary, and so part of the cost of this is being paid out of lapped salaries. However, part of it's coming out of the fund balance from the sanitation fund.
Right.
That sanitation fund is the fund that I, we've talked about at every budget workshop for the last two or three years, telling you that the cost to do sanitation is going up faster than our rates have been going up. However, we had an excess fund balance, so rather than raise rates, we're spending that fund balance down. Well, we've spent it down even more now by using some of that fund for this. And so in this budget cycle, we're likely gonna start looking at incrementally changing the rate structure so we can recover the true cost and, and get that. It won't, we don't have a crisis in this budget or even the next one, but we're gonna come to a point where we will, and this is just gonna accelerate that process because we've taken out funds that we didn't anticipate using for this.
It's one of the challenges of growth.
Yep.
And this is a one-time contract. It's not like...
Yeah, this is a one-time.
Gotcha. Yeah, I still, I still move to approve.
Okay. There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
And, and, Bobby, if you would get with Shannon to get the notices out and all that, that'd be great. Okay. Chairman, that brings us to the item eighteen, which is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes. You have the HHS Social Services Low Income Housing, Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. You have the Dare County Fire Extinguisher Service Contract. You have a budget amendment and change of the capital project ordinance for cooperative extension. You have a budget amendment for the oil spill exercise grant, and you have a budget amendment for Dare Med Flight.
Bobby, let me ask you a question on, um, consent agenda, item six. I understand this is a maintenance, three-year maintenance on Med Flight. Where do we stand with the rotor situation? That's been ongoing and ongoing and ongoing. Has that ever been resolved?
It has not. We're, we're at a point where they have what they believe is a solution, and the solution is to go from a four rotor system to a five rotor system. If you recall, what we have is a vibration problem.
Right.
And the vibration problem, we were afraid was gonna create additional maintenance costs for our equipment and things that we put in it. They try to resolve that by putting, they call them attenuators, or they send out a frequency that's the opposite of your vibration, and it attenuates the vibration. That helped. It didn't get us to the agreed-upon number. We had agreed that it needed to get to a certain number. I can't remember that number, but, and it didn't get us there. And so this five rotor system, they've done it on some of the other retrofits, and it has worked. We have a, a, how, what hour maintenance is it, Dave?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred hour maintenance coming up, and that takes us out of service for several weeks. We wanted to do the rotor retrofit and the eight hundred hour maintenance at the same time to try to keep it out of service at the same time. The same time, we're trying to juggle it around our peak times, and at the same time, when we do this rotor, there's some FAA regulations that have to be met and amended, and all those have to jive, and, or else we're gonna be out of service longer. So there's a process in place. They're working on getting all those scheduling things together. We, we, the eight hundred hour maintenance and the rotor replacement, we've got now that there's a, again, a thing with the FAA. And then the last kind of hiccup in that is they're gonna rent a replacement helicopter for us, so that the time it's down related to the rotor replacement, we're not at a revenue loss. And so all of those things are working together. Long and the short is we, that should happen in the next few months. We think we're at the end of that process, but it was, you know, they had wanted to do it back in June, and we couldn't do it in June, cause that's our high-volume period. We could not have the helicopter out of service for the eight hundred hour part back that, in that time of year. And so, anyway, that's coming, and so we think that's gonna happen in the next few months.
Well, I appreciate that explanation. That's why I asked the question, because on the maintenance, with us having that issue for the last three years, two of the items under item four, under, under the maintenance, has to do with the pitch trim motor and the and the collective trim motor, and it's about $25,000. So why would they be charging us that if, in fact, the vibration has caused these issues to occur? Wouldn't, wouldn't they eat that?
The maintenance on the pitch trim motor and the collective trim motor would not, that, that's an annual or eight hundred, part of the eight hundred.
I know that. I know it's part of the eight hundred thing, but they, they're saying that...
The eight hundred hour, the eight hundred hour maintenance is something we have to, if everything had been perfect and we didn't have any...
We'd had to do this.
We'd have to do that anyway.
Yes.
That's a, that's a normal thing.
I got you. Just...
That's what I was trying to...
I'm just trying to just check our pennies.
Bobby, just, just another question in that regard. Does changing to the five rotor system change any of the performance characteristics of the, of the...
It should not. Hasn't, they, they've done it in some of their other aircraft, and we don't anticipate any problem other than resolving the, the vibration problem.
Gotcha.
Bobby, let me ask you, um, I was reading the other day the new laws in North Carolina, and one of them is on the medical billing. Is the ability to bill for Med Flight, is that gonna affect us being able to collect?
Billing and collecting are different. It will help us, I guess...
You can bill all day.
On the billing side.
Collect it.
We're on the billing side. I'm sorry?
On the billing side, so we can't bill for that anymore?
We can't bill for what?
For the Med Flight.
I don't think that's what that statute says. That we can't bill for Med Flight?
It said that on the billing disclosures and so forth, unless you're notified, that they cannot bill you for it.
Well, then we'll make the disclosure. What that means is you don't have to take a helicopter ride for $18,000 without your consent, and so they want us to tell you before you get on the helicopter, this is gonna cost you $18,000. And so if we have to do that, then we'll follow the statute.
And, and the analysis that the reporter was given, it was pretty, what said it took out the, the ability for counties and hospitals to charge for flights, see, I would check into it. Or it might be...
People on a stretcher.
Yeah.
They read your...
I mean, listen, if I'm on a stretcher and I'm on a liver die, I'm gonna say, "Tape me."
Well, you would think, but, but I'll check on that to be sure, because obviously, that's a huge, I mean, for us, that would be a huge...
It would. That would be... And also, a lot of times, too, on, on, like, for a, a car accident scene landing for the helicopter, you can't get consent from the patient, cause they're...
Yeah. I'll, I'll check and see.
So...
That, that hasn't come to our attention from anybody yet.
Well, just past the first of January.
Well, you just told me. That's the first I heard of that.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Sentimented.
It's a motion by Commissioner Bateman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimous.
Next is your board appointments. The first is the Stumpy Point Community Center Board. Sheila Golden has resigned after serving for many years. The Stumpy Point Board recommends the appointment of Tammy Perry in score to serve her remaining term.
Move to appoint Tammy Perry in score.
Did, is a motion by the vice chairman to appoint Tammy Perry in score? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
And then next is the planning board. The term of James Buddy Shelton and Terry Gore expire in February. Both are recommended for reappointment for another term.
Move to reappoint.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to reappoint. It was a second by
Couch.
Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
And then your upcoming board appointments. In February, you have two terms expiring on the planning board. In March, you have one term expiring on the Parks and Rec Advisory Council, and one term expiring on the Worker and Waterman Commission. And then in April, you have one term expiring on the Airport Authority, and three terms expiring on the Mans Harbor Commission. With that, Mr. Chairman, that would be your agenda.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to item twenty, which is county managers' business and commissioner business. And Commissioner Couch, do you mind kicking it off this afternoon?
Thank you. I, I don't have a whole lot, other than we've been very busy on the south end of Dare County, and I, I know that it had to be the same up here. A lot of traffic over the holidays. But I just want to say to this board and to, to our citizens that 2022 is gonna be a very exciting year. We've got a lot going on. We are looking at having COA up and running. We've got a number of projects that are coming to fruition, and it's just gonna be a lot of good stuff gonna be implemented in 2022. And we've accomplished a lot, thanks to, uh, as a, as a government entity here in Dare County. It's just, I'm really proud and pleased to be a part of this group. It's an exciting time to be a Dare County citizen.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch. I couldn't agree more. Commissioner Bateman?
Just wanna wish everybody a happy new year.
Thank you, sir. Wish you all the best in 2022 as well.
Miss Deppleman.
Vice chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, wanna congratulate our service pin recipients, David White, Richard Burke, and David Bryan for their fifty years combined service to Dare County. Again, we, we really appreciate that service, and to our employee of the month, Jeff Mitchell, who is obviously an exceptional employee. who is obviously an exceptional employee.
Absolutely.
Just want to mention, Mr. Chairman, given this some rather serious thought, I feel like we need to revisit the ordinance regarding accessory dwelling units in Dare County. I think it needs to be revisited as a result of the critical situation that we find ourselves in regarding housing needs. And I've asked Planning Director Donna Creef and County Manager Allen to look into this. They're both here. If you have any questions, you can, or concerns, or whatever, you can, you can ask them. And, but we plan to have more detailed information with some specifics at our next meeting to discuss in further detail. But if you have any questions, Donna's available, Bobby's available to, to ask now. We've just had some sort of cursory discussion on it so far.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
Next thing, I just wish everyone a happy new year. And I hope that we can pay the heating bill in here for the next meeting. I won't be, I don't, I don't believe I'll be no colder after I've been dead for three days.
I think we can swing that.
Our guys are working on it, I promise.
Thank you, brother. Appreciate it. Thank you, Donna. Appreciate you coming back.
Thank you, Vice Chairman, for looking into that. We had a conversation over the weekend. And in light of housing issues and stuff, I think we really do need to take a look at that. And I appreciate the Vice Chairman spearheading that with the planning department and the county manager. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to wish everybody a very happy new year. I know 2021 was trying to trying for a lot of us. And I hate to say that it did go out with a bang. We lost Betty White. And she was an iconic actress. She was one of the few that could bring the golden era of Hollywood to modern times and do it in a comedic fashion. And I know she'll be missed by quite a few. Our day in history today, 1959, Fidel Castro took over the Cuban Army. And we know how that kind of went off. Over the past few months, myself, Dorothy Hester, Stephanie Banfield, and Benny Baldwin have been working on a project to get some information out to the general public and our representatives in Raleigh and also in DC as well, to give some insight of the commercial fishing industry in Dare County. And this is a full-length video. It runs about 22 minutes. We're not going to show the whole video here. And we're going to show you an excerpt of it to get a good idea of what it's about. And it will be going live this afternoon, not only on our YouTube channel, but also on the access channel for county government. And Matt, can you run that for us?
For centuries, Dare County's commercial fishing industry has been one of the largest and most important in the entire country, with generations of local watermen passing along the unique heritage of their profession to their children and their grandchildren. Commercial fishing is a way of life, and it's also an essential economic driver for our area. However, increased regulations have led to a massive decline in the number of commercial fishermen that are currently working in our waterways because it has become extremely difficult for them to make a living in their ever-changing industry.
People are getting out of it just because the regulations are getting too tight. You know, people got to keep up with different net size. And more gear means more money that they don't have. And, you know, they keep reducing what they can catch. So, it's harder for them to make a living.
Without Dare County's commercial fishermen, residents and visitors alike will no longer have access to the wide array of fresh, local seafood for which the Outer Banks is famous. To hear firsthand accounts from these local fishermen, as well as restaurateurs and seafood market owners who have been impacted by these regulations, tune into Dare County's Commercial Fishing Industry, safeguarding the community's longstanding heritage by supporting the livelihoods of local fishermen at youtube.com/darecounty. It's time for all of us to come together to support our local fishermen so Dare County's Commercial Fishing Industry and the many small businesses that rely upon having access to fresh, local seafood can survive and continue to thrive for generations to come.
So, like I said, again, I'd like to thank Dorothy and our Public Information Office, Stephanie Banfield, work with Harry Harlandis, Benny Baldwin, Baldwin Productions, put it all kind of together for us. And also wanted to thank all of our watermen who are in the video and expressing what changes they've gone through and how it's affected them and how it affects the industry as a whole. It's one of our heritages. It's something we need to protect. And you've, you've seen me time and time again putting out resolutions and going to meetings of unfair regulations that are putting on our recreational, I mean, our commercial fishermen. And I was, I kind of wanted to spearhead this video to kind of give insight to the people that are not here in Dare County that don't realize, you know, the impacts that are going on. It's hard for a, say, for a North Carolina representative that lives in the, in the far western part of the state to know what's going on in our coastal region. And this will give them some insight. So, with that, thank you very much. And like I said, happy new year, everybody.
Hey, Steve?
Yes.
Let me ask you, I'm sure everybody got that email from Dewey Hemerite concerning the offshore wind farms?
Yes.
Is anybody addressing that, far as the hearings are concerned?
I, I have been in touch with them. There is a, there's a whole bunch of internet meetings going on later on this week, which I'll be, be on those as well. And there's, right now, it's still in the, there's a whole bunch of planning going on for it. And we're all trying to research, you know, how is this going to affect our commercial fishing industry? How's it going to affect everything else that's out there? Not only in commercial fishing, but also the environment as well. A lot of people don't realize how much oil those things have in them. And especially an offshore wind turbine has anywhere from 400, 800 gallons of oil in it. And they, from times, will start leaking.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. So, when you see them, see the videos like on YouTube, when the windmills catch on fire, then they explode. That's because the oil is caught on fire and it's exploded.
Wow.
So...
Thanks. Thank you, Commissioner House. Well done. I'm, I'm anxious to see that full video. Because I know Benny Baldwin does a great job in his productions.
It was a fun...
So, I'm anxious to see that full video.
I'll tell you what, in going on with that, I cannot be more impressed with the work he did when he sent us the first rough draft of it. And we were thinking we'd probably have to have some changes to it. And we had to make one change.
Wow.
And that was good.
Good deal. I look forward to seeing that. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, thanks, Steve. That's good stuff and obviously fundamental and vital to our county. I just had a couple of comments. I agree. Passing in Betty White, another giant in the world of football. John Madden passed. We lost some great ones. We really did. With regard to the COVID-19 observation you made, Mr. Chairman, in your opening remarks, I would simply say, yes, those cases were a bit higher, quite a bit higher than had been trending, at 228. And most noteworthy to me, as I read the report, was that 40%, 4-0% of them were in folks who had been fully vaccinated. So, the conclusion I drew was vaccinations are absolutely effective in helping an individual ward off the most serious effects of the disease. But the vaccines do not necessarily prevent you from contracting the disease or passing it to another, which leaves me puzzled with many of the vaccine mandates. I, I just don't understand some of that. Moving on, in a blatantly partisan display of my football affiliations, I would simply point out that the Rose Bowl this year was one for the ages. I don't know if anyone saw the OSU-Utah game?
Oh, yeah.
It was one of the, one of the greatest football games I think I've ever seen. The performances from both teams were amazing. And I just couldn't get by without mentioning that. That, that bowl game was what it was all about for me in terms of college football.
Notre Dame game was disappointing, but awesome, awesome as well.
Yeah. They were leading and leading.
28 to nothing.
Oh.
We got a rematch coming up with the national championship.
Yeah. Number three.
I just wanted to point out, I attended a gathering of the Hospital Development Funding Group for the new cancer center. And pleased to report that they had a goal of raising half of their contributions. The target was 6 million. They wanted to get half of that in order to commence groundbreaking. And they reported that they have raised $3.6 million in the new cancer center. It's moving forward.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Tobin?
On the first, I had the opportunity to attend a very special event. Back in 1986, a young man was here in Dare County on a tourist visa. He's a young German man. And he had a vision of opening up a brewery, but the state laws didn't allow microbreweries in North Carolina. He went to Senator Mark Bassnight and talked to him about the possibility of changing some of the state laws. And Mark helped him out, thinking that this was going to affect one person in Dare County. What nobody saw was the explosion of microbreweries that were about to happen. Uli Benowitz was this young man. And his, he and his wife Eileen opened up the Weeping Radish Restaurant in Manio in 1986, right after the legislation passed. There are many, many brewers in North Carolina that owe their fortune to Uli. On January 1st, Uli locked the doors of the Weeping Radish for the last time under his ownership. I used to be in the original Mug Club when it was there. And, and, man, imagine that, huh, Wally?
I saw you in there.
So, Tammy and I went up to congratulate Uli and Eileen and their daughter Sophie, who I've known ever since she was a little girl. But it was really, really good to go up there and see them. And anyway, I'd like to just give a shout out to Uli and Eileen and thank them for everything that they did. It was another first in Dare County.
There you go.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Happy new year to everybody.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to County Managers Business.
I don't have anything, except while you were talking, I was looking at the surprise billing act that Commissioner Bateman pulled up. And Jenny, at the same time, sent me a message. We already, it already did require written consent before we take people on a helicopter ride anyway. So, it hasn't been an issue for us. But the surprise billing act doesn't say you can't bill them. What it says, for the most part, and this is summarized a very complicated piece of legislation, is that there was an issue with out-of-network payment. And people were being flown, we'd pick up somebody, or not us, but somebody would pick up somebody and fly them to an out-of-network cost that would double or triple the cost of the ride because they weren't in network for their insurance provider. And then they would come back and bill the patient for the difference. And this act now says that when you do that, they have to charge in-network rates. And so, they would get the same thing they would have got if you could have flown them to a hospital or doctor that was within their network. And there's some other rate restrictions and things like that to prevent, again, surprise billing. So, I don't think it's, hey, we're not going to get paid anymore. It's now protecting the patient from getting, you know, a rate at an out-of-network cost. And so, I don't think there's going to be issues for us. Haven't had any yet, so I think we're okay there.
Good deal. Thank you for that research, County Manager. Ms. Hester, anything from our Public Information Office today?
Yeah, we, happy new year.
Happy new year.
I just wanted, I think you all probably received the email notification that went out a couple of weeks ago for the community survey. We've officially kicked off the website redesign. And that's super exciting because it's been about five years since we did the last redesign. The surveys are coming in. The response has been great. So, last I checked, we were at almost 200, so...
Wow.
And Caitlin, Kate, from our office, is putting in a lot of work. She's more or less leading the effort for our redesign. We'll be meeting with departments. But I would encourage each of you and anyone listening, if you have some thoughts about things that are hard for you to access or just any observations, really, please share those with us. If you don't get the survey, of course, we'll take your input, however you want to offer it to us. And hopefully, we'll have that up and running by the fall. Knock on wood that the summer's not too busy. It is going to be a very busy year with all the many things Commissioner Couch mentioned, all the projects. We're, we're looking forward to it. It's going to be a busy one, so...
Absolutely.
Happy new year.
Thank you. For those of you that are not aware, Ms. Hester is a Georgia grad. So, who do you think she's going to be rooting for?
She's very humble.
In the national championship? Huh? Hopefully, Georgia will show up better this afternoon than it did last time.
Am I the only one that's had enough of the SEC? Am I the only one? Please, anybody but the SEC every year. Come on.
You got it, Rob. I mean, look at Alabama, what's...
There's a reason.
Yeah.
There's a reason.
Yeah. It's pretty awesome. Georgia Florida.
I'm kidding. Of course, they are. They are awesome.
Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, you have anything else for us?
No, sir.
I'm watching the Wake Forest game this weekend. And who would lo and behold, the coach, you know who the coach is? Wake Forest football?
Since twin.
Dave Clausen.
I signed the thing like a hundred jobs.
I said to myself, dang, oh, Dave, you got a part-time job on a weekend.
Who knew?
Rob, Commissioner Ross mentioned it. God, what a tremendous loss in the football industry.
Yeah, it's a giant.
I mean, what a giant. What a, you know, they, these guys used to just go ballistic when they were named part of the old Madden team. I mean, that was just a huge honor. I saw one NFL game this weekend, I mean, a game and a commentator. Actually, he said he got the award 20-something years ago. He pulled a jacket out of his closet and wore the old Madden jacket for his commentating. He said that's the first time since he put it in the closet when he won it that he's worn it. Of course, he was swimming in it because he was a lot, he had lost a lot of weight. But he was just so proud to have that on. And now I understand, the old NFL team, they're thinking about changing the name of that to the old Madden NFL team. So, pretty, pretty, I, I used to love listening to him. He, he just had just a great commentator about him.
Thanksgiving, the turducken.
Yeah. That's right.
And a turkey with eight legs.
He had it on a platter, and he had his hand, he was trying to slice it with his hand.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's just...
He was an original.
Iconic.
Total original, yes.
And same thing, Commissioner House, with Betty White. You know, I just heard, I was listening the other day, they were, had a big celebration that they were going to do her 100th, 100th birthday.
Two weeks.
And then bam, later that day, I see why she passed away. And, and just, The Golden Girls, heck, I loved that sitcom. That was an awesome sitcom that, but we have lost, even in Dare County, some unbelievable people in 2021.
Yeah.
Just gave so much back to our community.
And I know you'll be remembering that in your State of the Union.
Yeah, so I'm...
In State of the County.
I'm looking forward to doing that. As a matter of fact, we've been working on that for a couple of months now. We'll work with Dorothy and her staff this afternoon some more. and her staff this afternoon some more on it. But we're fortunate. We're blessed and I couldn't, couldn't be more proud of to serve on a board with committed commissioners as such as yourself. And I just wish, wish each and every one of you the very best in 2022. So thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, we need a motion to adjourn until January the 18th at 5:00 PM.
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House and it's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.